Looks like we just have a few more people signing in here, so we'll see when we get to the magic number. Just let me know when you're ready, Holly.
I'm ready.
You're ready? All right. It looks like everybody's pretty much muted. All right, well, call this meeting to order. It's Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. This is the city council meeting. First item would be the roll call.
Porzma?
Here.
Caravelo?
Here.
You?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Hirsch?
Here.
Hunt? Is Alder Person hot here?
They did not see him yet.
Okay, Jensen?
Here.
Lagaki?
Here.
Mijaski?
Here.
Reeves?
Here.
Schumacher?
Here.
Tukowski? I think. Oh, we got her. Okay, so then just Alder Person hacked his accident excuse for the moment.
All right, thank you, Holly. And do we have any communications tonight from Alders?
I have one, Your Honor.
Go ahead, Alder Person. Porzma?
I had a privilege of serving with our mayor and also the president or the president of the Stoughton Chamber was serving or packaging food for second harvest on Wednesday, the 18th. It was a great experience, and I would suggest that if anybody has some time, that particular organization could use your help, and it's a great organization. And again, I was pleased to serve alongside of the mayor for that on the 18th.
Yeah, I noticed they put us in separate rooms. Was that at your request?
Well, I had one other thing, and that is the mayor was packaging onions, and he smelled like the dickens the other days.
All right. Are there any communications from any other Alders? Hearing none. I had just had a couple that I wanted to share. The first one is the Jefferson Street Bridge, in case you haven't heard, is open. I want to thank our engineers, our planning department, and our public works department for getting together and coming up with the solution. And you can see on the right of the slide are the metal plates that were engineered by Strand or and then manufactured at our public works facility by our guys. They welded them together and bolted them on underneath the bridge. So the bridge opened up last week, so I want to at least give kudos to that group for doing that in a timely manner. And then also, you might have noticed the streetlights are up, so for the holidays and the banners that go with it. So downtown is looking festive, and I know there's more to come with the road repark lights will be turned on soon. So that's something we can look forward to. And I also wanted to recognize Cindy McGlin and the Stoughton Senior Center. We received an award through VITA, which is the volunteer tax service, after being in Stoughton for many years and bouncing around to multiple locations. They moved a few years ago and had been serving residents out of Oregon. And we had talked to them about coming back to Stoughton next year, and in the process, they we found out they had an immediate need, and Cindy took it upon herself to find some space at the senior center on short notice in order to be able to serve literally hundreds of people, had their taxes done for free, right at the senior center really well. And I'm pleased to say that next year, they'll be set up at the fire station. The VITA group worked with Chief Rep and I and Cindy to find some space there. We're going to use the conference room. Storage has always been a challenge. Josh and James Foster was able to find some places to store their materials. So we're pleased to say that they'll be in operation at the fire station for this upcoming tax season, so you'll hear more about that. So thanks for staff for all that, and these are just some of the little things that they do that are really easy for us to show. And I know there's a lot of other people in the city that continue to work hard behind the scenes that don't always get this kind of recognition, but we certainly appreciate the work that they do as well. So thanks for that. Anybody else have any communications? All right, hearing none. We do have a guest this evening, and Kelly Lapointe is here from Visitor Services, and she has what she told me was a brief presentation tonight. We'll see. And I'm sure Kelly would be more than happy to entertain any questions you might have when she's done. So the floor is yours, Kelly.
Thank you. Good evening. I am Kelly Lapointe, the Events and Visitor Services Manager at the Stoughton Chamber of Commerce. The Visitor Services Department within the chamber is funded by the hotel tax that Stoughton authorized in 2004. Although it is referred to as a hotel tax, it is the visitors that pay the tax, and hotels collect it and pay it to the city. This is common practice in communities across Wisconsin as a way to fund tourism marketing. The state regulations for this practice require a tourism commission to oversee the use of these funds. In accordance with these regulations, our tourism commission consists of representatives from a hotel, an attraction, a retail establishment, a mayoral appointee, and at-large members. Additionally, the state requires annual reporting of the previous year's expenditures, which is done by the city, but we provide all the data needed. I've created a recap of some of my larger advertising and marketing expenses for 2020, a little bit how I adjusted with the COVID impact. And for 2021, I've not made any large commitments, with the exception of our final payment for our Discover Wisconsin episode. We can go to the next slide. So this is the 2020 budget that was proposed at last year's meeting. There was a 2019 carryover. I am allowed to carry over 25% of the overall income for the year, so I was able to carry over $12,000. $10,000 of this went towards the third payment for Discover Wisconsin in 2020. Discover Wisconsin is an overall investment for the community of $40,000. 2021 will be our final payment. Next slide. This is the current 2020 budget versus actual of the financials that I pulled through October. So as you can see, the 2020 budget was for $47,000. What I've actually spent is $30,480. Marketing advertising had a budget of $28,750, of which I've spent $23,000. And printing costs, I had a budget of $850, of which I spent 201. The Travel Cares Grant is a grant I applied for through the Department of Tourism, and I received $7,000, which helped pay some of our backlog in administrative expenses that I did not receive via the low hotel rate or hotel income. Next. So the quarter one, marketing, a lot of these are already were already kind of set up in the fall of 2019. So a dining guide is a printed and printed material for a couple of the sporting events that happen at the Sports Enhancement Academy, highlighting where people can go grab a bite to eat while they're here. The Beloit Travel Center is a partnership that we have at their large visitor center. It's a nice big windowscape. And then, of course, as I mentioned, our Discover Wisconsin episode, it aired in 2020, and I was hoping to do a a big airing party for that, but that was early, or it aired a week before Seton MI with our launch party set for the end of April. So unfortunately, that in-person had to be canceled. We did do a launch party on Facebook with the host Mariah Haberman. Next. Quarter two, some of the marketing advertising was a print advertising that I had committed to earlier in the year. Destination Madison has a visitor's map. Bravo, I signed up for an April ad in their travel section, and then in the Viking Magazine, which is a Sons of Norway publication, highlighting our Seton MI festival. If you aren't familiar with how print works, this is committed in January and February and printed in March. Therefore, it was already out in circulation at the time of shutdown. Next, please. Quarter two, some continuation. I updated our poster at the Beloit Travel Center, which before had all the dates of our festivals, and I highlighted just some things that people could do outside. So that picture is actually a nice photographer photograph of Lake Kegans State Park. I also shipped out 6,000 of our community guides throughout the state to other visitor bureaus and chambers. On all of these, I made a little label saying these are printed in February. Please reference the chamber calendar for any updates as things may have been canceled or altered. And some more quarter two, marketing advertising, had a radio commitment for Seton MI. This was included in the sponsorship packages. With that festival not happening, I transferred that over to the Visitor Services budget, where I was able to split that two-week ad buy throughout two different months. So in May, I highlighted the the launch of the episode of Discover Wisconsin. The second week, I transferred to June 30th. At that time, if we could highlight the fair or the Catfish River Music Festival, those were canceled, so I edited the ad copy and just kind of highlighted people to come down and shop, especially during COVID and the major highway project. Quarter three, marketing, the Bravo sponsored content. This was originally contracted for a Seton MI commitment in May. The Bravo transferred it over to August, so I highlighted again shopping downtown. If you hadn't seen it, I have some copies at the chamber. It is also available online. But it's a very nice advertorial, so kind of a checklist of what you can find around Stoughton, and then just some nice write-ups on our local shops downtown. And our quarter four, marketing and advertising, committed to the Stoughton Opera House Arts and Community Guide, as I have in the past. And then I also created some shopping incentives for our hotel guests at the True and at Quality Inn. Some of our partnering businesses downtown were able to provide a little discount for people staying in in Stoughton for that time. So the idea behind this is the coupons would be available only during their stay, check-in and checkout, hopefully kind of get them back to stay in Stoughton and shop some more. And our new digital visitors map. So if you last year, I talked about our printed visitors map, which highlights our retail establishments, our accommodations, state parks, city areas, and restaurants. I found a way to make this digital. So actually, if you take your phone, an iPhone up to that QR code right now, you can pop that map up. Otherwise, I have the website address on the bottom right. This is also on the home site or homepage of the visitstoughton.com website. Just kind of gets people, once they're around downtown or around town, actually, we're in the palm of their hands, where websites are there, and it's an up-to-date map. And just some online marketing things that they keep doing. So Instagram, here's just some pictures that I pulled from October and how it screenshot looks. And then we have Facebook presence on the next one, on the next slide. And if you can see on the right hand, the second line down where you see a large reach, that was actually a boosted ad that I did for the downtown businesses when they got together and did a kind of a post-construction holiday weekend. So I boosted their their shopping opportunities, so increase the reach for them. And then I have a website, which is visitstoughton.com. Please check it out. And then this is also where we kind of highlight our monthly events and a monthly newsletter that goes out. And there's just some screenshots of what the website looks from the mobile view. Obviously, that'll look different from a desktop view. All right, and the 2021 proposed budget. So the projected balance of 2020 is what I estimated at last year's budget presentation. I am not doing that this year, so that is definitely a little different. The projected hotel revenue is estimating an average of $10,000 per quarter, which gives us the $40,500. The special projects income of $3,000 is for some of the community guide revenue, which will in turn go to the shipping cost to get that up into the statewide circulation. And then I'm also creating a new Stoughton wedding guide to highlight our accommodations, our businesses, and our independent businesses here in the area, which will hopefully go to print in January. Marketing and advertising have been cut in half from the previous years, just in turn to the decreased hotel revenue. Discover Wisconsin, like I mentioned before, this will be the last payment in 2021. That will be $10,000 of the overall marketing and advertising budget, leaving roughly $5,000 for the year in additional marketing efforts. Driving traffic to the website, social media, and print materials to aid our hotels, like the visitor map and the shopping incentives, will be the main focus for 2021. So the Stoughton Tourism Commission has approved the budget that you can see in your packet. This is provided for your information, and you do not need to take any action. Does anyone have any questions about the 2021 Visitor Services budget?
I guess I just want to say thank you for all that you've done. It's it looks wonderful. All that you promoted this year in this time, you did a great job. Thank you for all your efforts.
Thank you very much.
And what do you have going on this weekend, Kelly?
This weekend will be present in a safe environment. We will have pre-bagged swag bags for the first 50 people out in the community downtown. Typically, the shop small promotion from American Express has given out canvas bags, which people can grab and go to go shopping with. We will have these preloaded with just a bunch of community materials. So it's pre-contact less for interaction-wise, and we will be in City Hall parking lot starting at 10:00 AM, and we will be done once those bags are gone.
All right, any other questions?
Kelly, I commented on the QR code, and wow, nice, easy, slick. I like the dimension on it as well, and that is going to help get access to all kinds of ages that some of us who think in pamphlets. This is this is a good move. I'm sure downtown businesses will appreciate this.
Wonderful. Thank you for the feedback.
I saw my house easily, two seconds.
Thanks, Kelly.
Also, I just wanted to say, you know, those QR codes are wonderful for anybody coming from outside the country. They're very used to that. They've had them built into their phones a lot longer than we have, so that's really tremendous for us. There's so much information you can convey that way, so thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Kelly. Told you it would be brief. Have a good night. Okay, the next item on our agenda is public comment, and there is nobody registered to speak tonight, so we'll go to our consent agenda. And there are two items on the consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
And if anybody like anything acted on separately tonight? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is ordinance 25 of 2020, and this is a second reading that came from Public Safety, Alder Person Jensen.
Yes, I apologize ahead of the time. If you hear the squeaking, that's my dog. He's got his squeaky toy. Okay, ordinance 25, 2020, amending chapter 70-176 of the Stoughton Municipal Code, a subsection 82 relating to no parking anytime on the west side of Hole Avenue between Addison and Autogard Drive, and I would vote for approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Any other discussion, Alder Person Jensen?
Yeah, just briefly, this was came before our Public Safety Committee on October 28th. It was 5-0 vote in favor of this ordinance change. This is the area that, if you're familiar with it, in the new area out there, it comes right off of Highway A onto Hole. And on the west side of that, which would be if you're going north, it would be to the left side. There is a request by a resident that we put no parking in there because it was creating issues for them. And if you drive that area, you can see where it is. It's it has a slight curve on it, so with all of the residents parking there, it makes it quite difficult. So I think it's a very reasonable request, and I would I would encourage approval.
Any other questions or comments? There are none, all in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Next item is item R174 of 2020, and this one is coming from the Redevelopment Authority. President Hirsch, did you want to introduce this one?
Sure. This is R124, 2020, a resolution approving the summary report of the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Stoughton regarding the sale of the property located at 314 West Main Street, Stoughton, Wisconsin. Formerly or commonly known as a marathon site and ISO move.
Second.
All right, and President Hirsch?
As you know, this has been a long haul. It's been, as the name implies, a true marathon in trying to get this property sold. There has been some weird things that came up last year and that have been resolved, but in regards to like true transparency, I'm going to have Jamin, if you want to just kind of brief everybody what those were and how they were resolved, so everybody's on the same page before we vote on this.
Hey, I'm going to have to pull it up on a bigger screen here. I apologize. You just want me to go through the the open items that we have?
Well, the open items, but I guess more of interest is, you know, what was the delay, what we found in the deed, and how we had resolved that the liability to the city.
Okay. That was, actually, Mayor Swobie, are you running the screen?
Yeah.
You can actually go to start on page 16 of the document you have up. I believe you have the actual agreement up right now, right?
Yeah.
This is page 16, the PDF. The deed restriction that was found with the marathon site basically restricted any sort of residential or commercial development on this, made the property worthless. They went through a lot of work with Stafford Rosenbaum and reaching out to Speedway slash Super America to basically draft this environmental indemnity agreement. And they built in a few requirements that the buyer would have to follow. One specifically being the restriction of what they're going to build there, so it's going to be basically a commercial type entity. They're not putting any residential there. It had to be built on slab, and then they had to put basically a ventilation system in there, pretty equivalent to what you would see with the radon mitigation system. That's kind of the key items with this environmental indemnity agreement that we attached here. So that was a whole separate agreement that the city has with Marathon, Super America. And within the agreement, and that took a lot of time, and then within the agreement with the buyers of the marathon site, we basically built all of the requirements for the environmental indemnity agreement into the purchase and sale agreement itself. Is that good enough, President Hirsch, or were you looking for something else?
No, that's great. I just wanted everybody to know and kind of what the RDA had to go through, you know, some, you know, this deed that was kind of buried or thing that was found when we were trying to sell it, and I just want everybody to know how we resolved that. So hopefully, that's clear, and if anybody has any questions, I think Jamin and I could try to answer it, or the mayor Swobie as well, or Ozzy, who's also an RDA.
It was a long haul, but I think the RDA and the attorneys especially are comfortable with the agreement. Really, as it relates to the marathon purchase, there's really only one contingency hanging out there that may may or may not change the the status of this sale. Obviously, this property is what it is, and we're not gonna we're not gonna celebrate until closing. But really, the buyer is applying for a grant for some of the environmental cleanup that's still required there. He's confident he's going to get that grant, but that is kind of the one contingency that's hanging out there that 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 may not happen at this point. Other than that, everything else is pretty well been taken care of at this point.
Thank you, Jamin.
Are there any questions or comments from Alders?
Do we have, so the closing date, it doesn't look like that's been set yet, right?
That's correct. I can't remember the exact timing. If we said 30 or 90 days, once all the contingencies are satisfied, again, the one the one kicker that's hanging out there is is the warning of the grant. And I I believe he's applied or he's close to applying, and he should have news back on that shortly, but because of that particular item, we couldn't really put a timeline to that. And that's why the RDA agreed to basically a set number of days once all the contingencies were met.
Yeah, and I believe that would be the 30 days after the contingencies that are met that are on this page here. Any other questions? All right, here none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And are there any opposed? That motion does carry. All right, thank you for the RDA for your persistence. Next item is R175 of 2020, and this one comes from the Finance Committee. Alder Person Schumacher?
R175, 2020, approving a connecting highway designation agreement between Wisconsin Department of Transportation and City of Stoughton for costs for the maintenance of US Highway 51 from Hole Avenue to Robey Road. So moved.
Second.
There's a motion, and second, Alder Person Schumacher?
I'd like to have Director Shield go over some of the details of what this designation means and what is outlined in that, and then how he came up with the cost agreement and then what we still have to work on. cost agreement, and then what we still have to work on with formula with DOT, if he would be so kind.
Sure, thank you, so this, this extends our maintenance responsibilities from Hole Avenue to Robey Road on Highway fifty-one. As understood, as part of the agreement, we take over the maintenance responsibility after the three roundabout projects are completed. It's not for major construction, this is a maintenance agreement, so it's for us to do snow plowing and, and that type of maintenance activity on this newly improved facility after it's completed. This agreement does exclude the maintenance responsibilities for the traffic signals at Jackson and fifty-one. You'll recognize it's a fairly intricate system, and we didn't want to take on that responsibility and that burden, if you will, to maintain that system going forward, so we're able to have that excluded as part of our responsibilities, so DOT will retain that responsibility. And we're asking for a little bit of latitude and making sure that we can final review at a staff level with the mayor and the city attorney, if necessary, if there's any slight modifications to the agreement. Our understanding of the agreement is that this would increase our transportation aids to approximately twenty-nine thou, or additional twenty-nine thousand dollars per year, starting next year, if this document agreed to both by the city and the deal prior to the first. Our hope is to be able to capture that additional revenue starting in two thousand and twenty-one with the actual maintenance responsibilities to start conceivably at the end of two thousand and twenty-two, after the roundabouts are constructed. So we'd just like to have one last fresh set of eyes on it internally, once the DOT rectifies, or not rectifies, but clarifies our understanding of that calculation. That calculation, you might recall as part of the budget discussion, when there was contemplation of the additional public works position, it was calculated into that projected revenue, this revenue was projected into the budget anticipating it to come together for two thousand and twenty-one. So our hope is we'll be able to move forward with the opportunity for staff and the mayor to final, have the final look at it once we get the last revision from DOT.
All right, any questions or comments?
Yeah, Rodney, is this agreement going for like forever, or is there a set, set amount of time going forward?
Yeah, it becomes our responsibility going forward, not capital projects, but for maintenance purposes. Much like we maintain Highway fifty-one from Hole Avenue all the way through the city to Chevrolet Drive now. So this just extends that maintenance responsibility to Robey Road.
Does that also include like any maintenance on the extra roundabout, like the concrete and whatever the, whatever we plant in the middle of that as well?
Yeah, it, the plantings, of course, major construction, no, but certainly routine maintenance, snow shoveling, snow removal, maintenance of the roundabouts. You'll remember, we already have a maintenance responsibility for the roundabout on one thirty-eight for the center bulb of that as well, much like we do for the shared use path along Kettle Park West, we'll have the maintenance responsibility for the, the wide sidewalks and the sidewalks as part of these roundabout projects as well.
Is that enough money for all those maintenance per year, I mean, are we?
Yeah. We've been, we've been working, working with Director Abear on this very topic, and he's, he's understanding the scope of the responsibility and feels that this is gonna be able to be accomplished, you know, certainly with the additional position to help offset that, but he feels comfortable that we can take on this responsibility with the additional staffing that's been included in the two thousand and twenty-one budget as well.
And that's enough compensation, I guess, is what I was getting at, for all that extra work?
Yes, we believe that it is.
Okay.
And are there any other questions or comments? And then, you know, I just, a couple things, first of all, I guess I'm looking for Attorney Dragney to see if we have to do anything with the language that gives us the, kind of the flexibility to have the one final say on an updated document, and while you're thinking about that, I want the council to understand in the community that it's not because of lack of effort on our part that we don't have what we would consider the final, final document. You know, Director Shield's been working all along to try to keep them moving forward to give us that document, and I know he was on the phone yesterday as I witnessed it, and so he's been, you know, poking them often, just to get to this point. So having said that, Matt, is there any, is the language gonna be okay for us to review this one more time?
I don't know, Matt's on.
I don't think that's on.
Oh, I thought, I thought I saw mine earlier. Did you think we needed some language, Rodney, or you think we're good, or, I know we talked about the finance?
Yeah, I, I think if there's just an understanding that we need to have a, an opportunity to review it one last time before we sign off on it, giving us the authority to do so, I think is inherent in the, in the motion.
Is everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I just wanted to make sure we, before we voted on that, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And is there anyone opposed? None opposed, that motion does carry. Next item is R one seventy-six of two thousand and twenty, and this one is coming from the Finance Committee. All the person Schumacher.
R one seventy-six, two thousand and twenty, authorizing and directing the proper city official to approve the Police Department two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one union contract, so moved.
Is there a second?
Okay.
All right. And there's a second, all the person Schumacher.
All right, happily, this one was ratified, and we'll have AJ go over the, the great details that were on this one, if she would please.
All the person Schumacher, I am pleased to announce that the union, we were able to come to a two-year agreement, and the, kind of the highlights of what occurred was they would like wage adjustments to take place on January first. Really what we're doing here is just memorializing what is actually happening, that is our current process, so we added that to the contract. In regards to holidays, they asked for one additional floating holiday, which would give them a total of three holidays, and that is the same as our non-represented staff, so they were asking to be brought to the same level, which we felt was fair. We increased the uniform allowance from five hundred dollars to five fifty, that'll happen each year of a success, successor agreement, and that definitely keeps us in line, we looked at neighboring communities, and that allows us to have those ballistic vests that are going to be approved by the chief, and he can talk a little bit about that. And then, after shift announcements are made, they ask for the master vacation pick schedule to be actually posted. Again, that's just memorializing what we're already doing. And then they asked that the pick year runs from January first to the thirty-first, which again is the same as what we're already doing. And then, the big part here, two thousand and twenty-one, we were able to come to an agreement with a two percent increase, which you've already approved through the budget process. And then for two thousand and twenty-two, we agreed on one point five percent with a me-too clause, which means if the city is to give more to the non-represented employees, we would bring the union employees up to the same level. Any questions on that? Pretty straightforward.
Is there a disparity between the number of holiday, paid holiday days this would create for the Police Department versus other city employees?
No, as I said, Ben, this brings them to the same level as the non-represented staff, so this brings them right to where we're at. That's okay, good question.
She's a fast talker, Ben.
I do see in the resolution, we have to make one modification, we've got two thousand and twenty and twenty-one listed in the resolution where this one is a two thousand and twenty-two contract, correct?
Thank you for catching that, Brett.
AJ, along the lines of Ben's question, I just took a look at the weeks of vacation allotted. Is that also in line with what other city employees have?
That is in line with what other police officers receive in neighboring communities, that is not the same as what we have for our non-represented staff, different types of positions, different types of vacation schedules, so you're not comparing apples and apples, but if you take us and compare us to another neighboring community or other police departments, we are in line.
Is that line a little bit more generous for the first year, is one week of vacation for a police officer the norm?
Yes, yes, that is the norm.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions or comments, or anything from you, Chief Luck?
No, nothing to add, the only thing I will add is it gives the, the chief the authority to approve any tactical vest carriers. The trend over the last probably ten or fifteen years is to begin to wear the ballistic vest over top of the uniform instead of under the uniform, it also allows for the officers to move some of that weight of equipment from their belts up onto the vest, and the one thing that I always get concerned about is that the vest can have a tendency to look a little too military-ish, and so I really like the fact that the, the department still gets to control that look, and the city gets to, to have a say in, in how that vest appearance is, and so we can try to make that more civilian in nature, but there is a lot of benefit to having some of that equipment moving up from their belts up on to their vest carrier as it reduces back strain and so forth, you can imagine how heavy that utility belt gets with all the equipment that's on there, and anytime they can move some stuff up, it just definitely redistributes the weight a little better and avoids injury and long-term problems for officers with carrying that extra weight.
All right, thank you for that, anybody else have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? That motion carries, thank you, thank you for your work, AJ and Chief.
You're welcome, thank you Alders for passing that, we appreciate it.
Okay, next item is ordinance twenty-six of two thousand and twenty, and this one is coming from the Plant Commission for a first reading. All the person Curvalo, do you want to introduce this for the first reading?
Sure, thank you, this is ordering twenty-six of two thousand and twenty. And ordering, and ordinance repealing zoning code section seventy-eight dash two oh five parentheses twelve, and all ordinance references to a group development within the Stoughton Municipal Code of Ordinances, and this is the first reading.
All right, do you want to explain the rationale behind this, or would you like Director Shield assist, or what would you like to do?
Well, I can, I think I have kind of the, I'll let Rodney take it after, but I think it's, basically, this is in efforts to kind of clean up and make things easier to understand in our ordinances. This really just focused on three aspects of, this, this particular piece focused on three aspects of certain projects, which were only waste and trash bins, building position on the sites to accommodate future potential lot divisions, and pedestrian and bike accommodations, and all of these are root parts of site plan evaluation, and also looked at as parts of conditional use permits or plan development, so having these particular three things focused on, I guess, made it confusing since they are already looked at in other parts of our review process, and I'll hand it to Rodney.
Yeah, it certainly sounds alarming to remove a section called group developments, but really, the group development was creating confusion because it was used, and all it was really doing is evaluating these three primary aspects of projects, and as was stated, they're really evaluated as other aspects of the review, so it, it was a clumsy part of the, the code section, so we're recommending that that be removed, and we acknowledge, we believe that they're, they're properly accommodated elsewhere within the zoning provisions.
All right, are there any questions for this tonight, otherwise this one will be back in the next meeting. Okay, hearing no questions, we'll move on to the next one, and that's R one seventy-seven of two thousand and twenty, and this one's coming from Public Safety. Well, it actually didn't go through committee, but I'll have all the person Jensen introduce it and explain why it's here tonight.
Sorry. Yes, thank you, your honor, Resolution one seventy-seven, two thousand and twenty, authorizing and directing the proper city officials to appoint Jake Dillon as the agent for Quick Trip, doing business as Quick Trip one, or excuse me, number nine sixty-seven, located at twenty-four hundred Robey Road, and I'd go for approval.
Sir, a second?
Second.
And there's a second, all the person Jensen?
Yes, normally this would, you would think that this would be going through the Public Safety Committee before it comes to council, but in, but because of state statutes, it has to go to the first available, in other words, if, if our Public Safety Committee doesn't meet as it would normally until Wednesday, it needs to come to this body first, otherwise it would have gone to Public Safety and then come to the council. So that's because of state statutes that we're, we're bringing it directly.
All right, and my understanding is, is we still do the same internal evaluation of it, is that correct, Chief?
That is correct, and we have no issues with the change of agent.
All right, thank you, anybody have any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed, that motion carries. Last item for tonight is R one seventy-eight of two thousand and twenty. I can have Holly run through it, or I can entertain a motion, is there a desire to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, the motion, by Harley, is your second?
Second.
And I heard a second, all right, and Holly, do you want to just walk us through this one quick, this is one that we anticipated.
Sure, so at this, at this point is some formality, so the council decided, when Tim Riley resigned, to appoint someone to fill his seat until a special election could be held in April of two thousand and twenty-one, it's a special election because that seat normally wouldn't be on the ballot, so there's already an election going to be occurring in April of two thousand and twenty-one, so the seat that Joyce Tocowski currently has will be up for election for the remaining two years in April of two thousand and twenty-one, and this is just the formality of getting that position on the ballot.
All right, any questions or comments?
I just noticed a typo in the third whereas line, I think April is listed twice.
Got it.
All right. And I was told I had to promise Holly no more election talk after this one for a while. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 And any opposed? None opposed.
I'm staying.
One abstention, okay, should have thought of that.
It's all right.
All right, that's all we had on the agenda, entertain a motion, do adjourn.
Removed.
Is there a second? And all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
And any opposed? None opposed. Thank you, everyone. Please be safe during the Thanksgiving holiday.
Yeah. Thanksgiving, everybody.
Please don't take. Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.